It's 7:00 PM. This is the Village of Leonard Planning and Mission meeting. I'm hoping to be meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'd like to ask the Lord that we will be guided to make fair and just decisions for the village and pray for the health and happiness of everyone here. Amen. Do you want to do a roll call?
Roll call. I'm ready. Absent.
With excuse.
Absent. On the count of...
Here.
No, I hear you. Here. Swire?
Here.
Zona?
Here.
Okay. Then, if we could, I'd like to make a...
I could make a motion to approve the agenda. I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as provided. I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, has everyone had a chance? I sent the minutes along. Has anyone had a chance to review it? Does anyone have any changes, comments, or questions?
No. I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes. The minutes remain 19th of previous week.
I'll second. Good. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have one audience member. It's Mike McDonald. But I kind of put it in the agenda in our planning commission business. So do you care if I just go on?
No, it's fine. It's fine.
So I'll just say none. Or I guess you could say McDonald's in the audience. Sidewalks. We still are working to get the sidewalks paved in front of the nature park. And is there an update on that exactly? Just kind of...
No. It's...
I know. We're waiting on Row and the plan for the parks official.
The proposal that Row gave to the village for the development of the park, the survey and all that was
What was it?
Nearly $60,000, which was $28,000 more than we had available. So we did not make an agreement. Subsequent to that, they made another offer, a scaled-down proposal, but it was still significantly over the $32,000 that we have budgeted for it. And that includes the money from Oakland County Park Grant that we did receive. So I think we're looking at an à la carte menu now. I think we might just go ahead and talk to a surveyor, get the park property surveyed, get the corners set. And then someone suggested at our last meeting, a landscape architect, rather than, you know, buy the whole program. We would just try and get done what we can get done. And that will include a sidewalk. There was some talk about the kind of sidewalk to have images in it like they did down at the Village of Rochester Hills. And I did go there and look. And it's pretty cool. But that will slow things down and cost some money. Not that that's necessarily a factor, but if we're going to do it, we need a plan for it.
Right.
So basically, the thing that's holding us up the most is not getting a one-stop solution through Row services. And we're still waiting on them too with the sewer study. So I wish I could give a better report, but that's really where things are right now.
That moves us along to the marijuana law discussion.
Okay. Jennifer and Lori have already heard a lot of this because of their involvement with the village council. But I wanted to be here first to try and answer any questions that the commission might have. And then, before I do that, or maybe before we get to that point, I'd like to give an overview of kind of what has happened so that everybody is working on the same information on the same page. So whatever your...
Questions? Okay. First of all, what... We have ordinances that we already adopted. What's wrong with the ordinances or what is changing?
Well, in 2018, the proposal was put forth for what's commonly referred to as a recreational marijuana law. But in reality, that law was actually called the... I had it right here. I want to get it right. Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, or MRTMA. But later, we know it as the recreational marijuana law. And so that law was a new law that did not cover medical marijuana, which we have already included in our zoning and our co-ordinances to regulate that. And also under the medical marijuana legislation, they provided that marijuana operations and facilities could be zoned. You could place them in a zoned area. You couldn't... So we chose to do it in light industrial. We could have used commercial. We could have light industrial, whatever. But... And that's what most communities did. Also, as part of that law, they provided that communities could set up zones so we could have a marijuana zone like where...
Like where?
Yeah. Everything would kind of keep it all in one area rather than spread out in the community. And the same applies to the recreational marijuana law, except the petition that was approved by the voters included the language that you cannot exclude marijuana from any zoning district unless it was a residential zoning district that was exclusively for residential use. That most communities in Michigan, at least, their zoning includes permitted uses that are slightly different than exclusively residential. So in other words, a lot of churches and schools are located in residentially zoned property because they were given a special use permission from the community's planning commissions to build there. And our zoning ordinance provides for that in our residential districts. So we are not exclusively residential. And our attorneys even were concerned that we do allow home offices so people can operate a business out of their home. And that's, again, another deficiency in what if you try to interpret a residentially zoned district as strictly residential. Most Michigan communities don't meet that test. And that's exactly, I believe, and this is my opinion, and that's exactly why the law was... The coalition that drafted the petition to put it on ballot for people of Michigan to vote, I think that was crafted particularly that way so that recreational marijuana would be much easier for them to be started up and implemented. The law does provide for a community to opt out or opt in. We opted out back then. We said, no, recreational marijuana is... We've got the medic medicinal, recreational. It's like any law. The legislature usually tunes up new laws like this. And they did that with the medical marijuana law. They passed a lot of licensing requirements, et cetera, et cetera. And it took them about two years to do that. And so I think the thinking that we had on the council was, let's let this shake out a little bit before we opt in, if we opt in, and maybe it'll be a better position. Because these seemingly minor gray areas are actually quite important, especially, I think, to residents in a community where they might be in close proximity or if you live in a residentially zoned area, to have literally a business and/or businesses, even if they're operating under one roof. There's noise, traffic, et cetera, which is uncommon and not desirable in most residential areas. So the Oakland Cares Coalition, they go by several names in Michigan and in Oakland County and other counties. But they're the ones that initiated the petition. And it was submitted. It had at least the minimum number of village residents' signatures on it to put the question on the ballot for November. And that's kind of where we were. The village council met and coordinated with our village clerk, who is in charge of election matters as far as what the village is going to do. Addison Township Clerk Pauline Bennett is our final clerk, which means that anything we do has to go through her to go to the county. So it's an extra step. It's not problematic, but communication can sometimes take a little longer because you're going back and forth, back and forth. So the village council drafted language for the introduction. The Constitution requires that if a citizen's petition is received and approved and meets the standards, that it has to go on the ballot. The only thing that the local community really has any control over is the title and the introductory language for the proposal and what the people will be voting on. So the village approved the language that says, "This petition would require the Village of Leonard initiation of an ordinance to allow an adult-use recreational marijuana establishment." It sounds kind of innocuous when you say that that way. And the devil is in the details because... And I'll get into that after I get through this. The Village of Leonard, as was required by Section 6 of Section 1 of the Michigan Regulation and Taxation Marijuana Act, 2018 Initiated Law, forward the proposition to allow and regulate within the village limits the business operations of persons, businesses licensed by the state to operate marijuana establishments. This proposition would, one, allow state-licensed marijuana establishments to operate within the village in any zoning district, including residential zoning. And, two, provide for an ordinance for regulation of recreational marijuana for the operation of an establishment within the village limits for growers, processors, retailers, transporters, and microbusinesses. Should this proposition be adopted? Yes or no? The coalition took umbrage with our language. The village went to court twice, was sued twice. And we were successful. We were the judge. And judges upheld the dismissal of their suit, claiming that it was prejudicial language and that it needed to be changed. It was basically quashed. And to my knowledge, they have not appealed to the Supreme Court, which would be the next step. So that's kind of where we are with that now. What we'll see on the ballot is what I just read to you. As I said, the details of a marijuana establishment, I think everybody that received the petition was given the impression that there was one dispensary. That's all they want. However, state laws preclude the community from not allowing any of those uses. And I'm talking about the growers, processors, retailers, transporters, and microbusinesses. They can operate under one roof. In other words, once a community opts in, even if we've only provided for one facility, which they call a dispensary, but under the law, you can't just say, oh, you can only have a dispensary there. The law says the other uses are also allowed. So in theory, you have four or five different businesses under one roof in a residential zoning district. Because as I said, our residential zoning districts don't meet the exclusively residential requirement. So I wanted to talk to you about this because you will become involved in this at some point if this proposal passes in November. And if it doesn't, you may get questions or have questions yourself. And so I just wanted to familiarize you with it. I expect that there will be some advertising done by the coalition. They don't have a track record of taking anything negative to them lying down. So there may be eventually advertising and things like that. But fortunately, the village council, when the original petitions were passed around back in February, we started the process of learning more about the law. And I think it paid off in this case because we were somewhat ready for the questions in that that would be coming to us. So the village council has to stay neutral. We cannot take a side. We have to present this to the public because it is their choice. Privately, we can't talk with people about our own personal opinions, but we cannot say, represent ourselves as speaking for the village. We have to make sure that they understand that I'm speaking for myself and not for the community. So I felt that it was important that the planning commission be aware of that and especially to have a better knowledge of the zoning situation. So that's why, even though it's one dispensary, in theory, it could actually be four or five businesses under one roof. And then beyond that, the only restrictions that state law places on marijuana facilities is by state law, they cannot be closer than 1,000 feet to a school, a public or private school. But that is it. They don't include churches like the alcohol laws do. So it's much broader, more permissive, I guess you could say. And a local community can actually reduce that distance if the community chooses to. But right now, it stands at 1,000 feet. And there's really not much else. They do have to be licensed. The marijuana establishment is required to be licensed by the state. And for each of those, for a dispensary, for a grower, for a processor, for microbusiness... By microbusiness, I think they're referring to paraphernalia, anything related to the marijuana trade or use. They all require a separate license. And they're not cheap licenses to get from the state. The state did cap local communities from charging more than $5,000 for a local application and marijuana license. But the village council has not entertained that yet. I think we'll probably see what happens with the outcome of the election. So I think the primary concerns were that people would have gotten an impression when the petition was passed around. And secondly, that most people would, I think logically, assume that the marijuana business would be in a commercial downtown, maybe light industrial area. That's kind of common sense. This is a very unique situation regarding the recreational marijuana law. So I'll open it up to you if you have any questions that doesn't affect our village or...
Well, the ordinance we have in place doesn't cover it by just saying it has to be in light industrial or the new recreation law kind of nices that?
Yes. The new recreation law applies. And it doesn't prohibit... The new law doesn't prohibit a medical marijuana licensee from obtaining a recreational license. But... And that works good for them because if they've already got a place, then they can have it at their medicinal place or they could set it up in another location if they wanted to.
So if you had residential property and then this was another residential vacant property and this was residential? If there's two residenials, you're saying that if this was residential, it could be changed into having a marijuana facility on?
Yes.
Also, you would have to change it. It can be in a residential area.
Yeah. All they would have to do is get a license from the village. And the ordinance... And that was another unique thing about this proposal that we received, our petition, is that it also included the ordinance that they want to see adopted by the village. And if it passes, we will have to adopt this ordinance. And the ordinance has a lot of unique provisions, some of which are like, it includes that felons convicted of marijuana violations should be allowed to work in the facility or actually required. I mean, it kind of required... The village doesn't really have anything to do with hiring or firing, but the ordinance has a lot of language about who can work there and why they can work there, which is exceptional.
Well, why would... How can you vote on something that you don't know? They undermine...
Because it was a constitutional... The Constitution of Michigan sets a legitimate citizen's petition placed on... Or petition that has enough signatures has to be considered.
Right. Considering what's in the petition, but the petition, when you see your ballot, you don't know that felons can work in this?
And one of the reasons I'm here is because people need to understand that we don't have much say over it. And beyond that, and one of the things that we explored early on is... Everybody gets it. A lot of communities are bathing in the glow of opening up marijuana facilities. They get the licensing fees. Plus, there's an excise tax on the sale of marijuana that goes into a fund at the state. And then at the end of the year, that fund is split up based on sales to the communities that have allowed facilities and legal facilities in other communities. What we've learned is that in 2021, there were a total of 110 municipalities qualified for the dispersments. Each eligible municipality... And this is just an average number. Received just over 56,000 for every licensed retail store and microbusiness within its jurisdiction.
The more people that pop up, the more that number gets because it's still a shared number.
Right.
So there's more people that have a pot to take it to hide it between.
It's... Legitimately, the village council received advice that going forward, it would be difficult to predict the value of the dispersments. Michigan may be currently seeing peak demand as sales records in 2021 surpassed longer established markets like Colorado. And second, and this is probably key to us and would affect us a lot, is as more municipalities see this year's dispersment as a revenue opportunity, more municipalities may choose to opt in. As the number of eligible communities increases, each municipality's share will be diminished. This is particularly true if larger municipalities could license 50 or more retailers opt in. There's 1,173 municipalities within Michigan with barely 10% of them opting in at this time. So between communities that see this as a potential revenue stream and organizations that are pro-marijuana and like Oakland Cares that would open up communities that are close to it, it's not... It won't be as lucrative. That's the bottom line. And frankly, the Village of Leonard doesn't need the income as it adds so much administration to our workload, you know, having to do the state reports, et cetera.
Doesn't play out the burden?
Yeah. It just... It's like the sewer study. Things like that will radically change how this community manages itself. And we're talking in terms of professional management. I mean, it's not going to be just a citizen that's elected because she cares about what's going to happen in the community. I mean, these cities are big deals. I've learned since COVID, just going through COVID, there's a huge amount of administration. I was fortunate because the township supervisor and I both worked together. And so we were able to educate ourselves and get the funding out. We obtained the funding and dispersed it to the local businesses that had applied for it. So... And that took a tremendous amount of time. If I had been retired and available, I just can't imagine how the village would have... Well, the people would have suffered. The businesses wouldn't have gotten the money. It would have entered work communities. They just... They didn't do it. I think we tried to do the right thing by our local businesses and keep them in business by getting this extra money. But those types of things make this job a lot harder and requires a lot of hands-on, in-the-office administration. And we've really tried hard to avoid having that happen. It's expensive. And until recently, we really haven't been a drawback for the community other than maybe ordinance enforcement. There's a lot of people that would like to see things done differently, especially 4285 Forest, 4440 West. There were people that were really upset when that place was allegedly growing marijuana for a couple of years. But that's a bigger decision than the heart council will make. That's going to really be up to the people of the village. If they vote yes for this, it's going to have to... We're going to have to rethink how we do things around here.
Back to your point. Is this petition that they filed public knowledge?
Yes, it is.
So are we able to present it so that everybody in the village can read it and let the village chatter do its thing? Whatever it may be.
Right.
Keep us... It's a neutral position. So is, are we able to present it so that everybody in the village can read it and let the village chatter do its thing? Whatever it may be.
Right.
Keep us, it's a neutral position, just this is what it says. So you can read the full...
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. The human, the human value of this thing is, is it, is having a local marijuana retailer going to be really beneficial for most of the people in the village. Because really, a village can't sustain a business like that. It will have to rely on, well, just like all of our businesses, they have to rely on people coming from elsewhere and bringing them work and income.
And I think whoever went out to get signatures certainly didn't read the whole petition. This is what, it's like 13 pages long. This is ridiculous.
Yeah, it's seven or eight pages long.
Several pages long, or legal size, aren't they?
Right, yes.
So I'm sure they didn't read that full petition. They only gave the parts that were, you can get a signature.
Because...
Then we go forward with our statement, which also doesn't cover all those nuts and bolts.
Right.
Ours is very, you know, we tried to just kind of capture what we could in so much space, but now the village needs to hear. I don't want the village to come back and tell us.
And one of the things, and that's valid, one of the things I would like to emphasize is, is that it's a lot to take in the first time you hear.
Yeah.
I mean, it's taken us several months of this process to become familiar with things as we now understand it. And we're by no means experts, but we've had the old systems. And we've never tried to, we've always, we've never attacked the petition itself as being legitimate. We recognized that when it was turned in and there were enough signatures of village residents on it to make it a legal petition. So a lot of communities have tried to buck it and say, you know, federal laws, it's illegal. I don't like the way the language is in the ordinance or the petition. So we're just trying to make sure that people understand exactly what this represents.
Yeah, I think in that, Mike, too, as we were researching, trying to grasp what it meant, because it really, it is really dry reading to read through all those pages of that petition. It was a challenge to get through it and then also to kind of read between the lines of what it's saying. And kind of went down a rabbit hole going on the internet and just kind of trying to look at other communities that are set up a little bit like us. We are incredibly unique just because of the overlapping zoning, that we don't just have anything that's strictly residential, where we can't just put them, you know, in a light industrial district. And I think that things that I was reading were things like, in a community that's similar to ours, the increase in traffic, where people can park, where people are turning around, what's happening, because it could happen on your street. It could happen on your street. And the flow of traffic, that we don't really have a good setup for that and are people prepared for how that might affect them. Or the other thing is that people haven't really considered was, if it were to end up like next to your house or next to my house, the smells that are involved in that. And a lot of comings and goings of a lot of different people and things and different hours of the day, so it kind of changes the atmosphere of the neighborhood. And so that's what I was kind of, that's what I found when I was reading. And it didn't really, it wasn't so enlightened when I read the petition, but more or less when I was seeing what other people were saying. And hopefully our citizens can do the same and just kind of, you know, go on the internet, look around and see other communities and what they've experienced.
And our reaction or our effort is to, we looked at the state law. We didn't look at what everybody else was doing. We looked at the state law and what they were asking for and how they asked for it. And by telling us that all they want is a dispensary is, I would allege that it is misleading. Because under the state law, if they, if Ville jobs in, not only could they come in for a license for a dispensary, they could decide that they want to have a processor there and a microbusiness and that there's really nothing we can do to prohibit it. Even though it says we've only opted for dispensary, the law says you can't do that. As long as they pay their licensing fees for whatever kind of business they want, they can have under one roof, at least at this point. And that's another point is to bring up, is that what happens if this turns out to be as lucrative as it probably is for the owners? What about Sam or some other business owner that thinks, well, I'd like to have a marijuana license. Why, why shouldn't they be allowed to do it and I can't? So there's every possibility that somebody will come back to the village council and say, I want to see the ordinance changed so that I can apply for a license. And again, that's what we're looking at. It's kind of a Pandora's box because we don't, the state really has not done anything to the recreational laws like it did to the medical marijuana laws, at least not yet.
Well, if we have an ordinance, doesn't it mean we have an ordinance? You can't have somebody come in and say, I want to change the ordinance so that...
The state law, when they wrote the ballot, the proposal to allow marijuana in 2018, they included language that said, citizen's petition can be used to overrule communities' opt-in.
There, there.
And you can actually do it both.
Okay, because you keep using the opt-in, opt-out. If it's on the ballot and it gets passed, we're automatically in. It's not opting in or out, we're in.
Your choice before us, in a way.
Right.
Yeah.
Why, see, how much anything you can do, that's why I think now the forefront is huge.
And that's a huge gray area because that language that provides for a citizen's petition to opt in, there's also provision for a citizen's petition to opt out. And we, you know, that was one of the things we talked about as well. Should the village have a, you know, should somebody pass a petition to opt out of it? And you know what? It would be a, it would be a, we would be a test case, is what they would allow them to. Because the law is so gray in so many areas that I don't think they really know what would happen if that effect.
If it were to pass.
Yeah, as long as they think money's rolling in, both the communities that want marijuana, they're not going to complain until it becomes not worth it, so.
Well, I guess the opt-out, the petition to opt out would probably only be used after four years of being opted in and dealing with chaos for one year. You're like, citizens, you have to do this yourself. You have to do it.
Yeah, there are a couple provisions that I'm not clear on, but one, they do pertain to a period of time.
I should say cycles.
Yeah, I read it that if this, if the proposal were to fail, that it would be at least two years before they could come back and do it over again, which I would fully expect. But I don't, I don't want to be the test case. I mean, the village can't afford to be the test case on this.
And where's the closest open dispensary from here?
I'd have to say Oxford, yeah.
It's not open yet, is it?
No.
Oh, there's several.
There's one on 24 that is, was the old, there's a restaurant of some sort.
And there's on Glassby Street, when you come to a stoplight, you know, there's another one down the, this is an industrial facility. Now it's a very nice looking place, and I guess they can afford to do that. Yeah, there's, oh, they're propagating like, what's the flower of marijuana? I mean, they're tossing it all over Oxford and Lake Orion because both communities, both townships and Oxford Village, I don't know about Lake Orion Village, but I know Oxford Village, Oxford Township and Orion Township are, they're booming with these facilities. So.
Is there any Romeo, or Dragon?
What we all actually had on the front page of the website, come to us, get a license. And I was like, oh my. I could live, it was an open invitation to come their way.
I hadn't heard that.
And I'm just going to surround the communities, Dragon?
I don't know. I hadn't seen it in Dragon, but that doesn't mean it's not there.
Right. But I'm sure Lepire has them.
Yeah.
I have a good feeling on my...
And it's kind of, analogy is, is that when your community is developing, it's much easier to work with the large companies that have experience for developing property, building subdivisions or local streets and homes. They're much more willing to work back and forth with you to accomplish their goals. The smaller, newer companies have, are more difficult. It makes more work for the community because they have problems with inspectors, they have, you know, they just, everything's a one-off kind of situation. And the same in this business, I'm sure. Both, from what I've read, and this is just my take on it, a lot of the mom and pop startup marijuana places are being absorbed or dobbled up by the bigger companies. And so now you're seeing chains like this, the new one in Oxford Jars, they're a hub for Michigan already. And I don't, I don't know how big they are.
That one's getting bigger. And then the Liff was the last one. You should see, I travel, obviously all of those places, and I see them in a lot of places. I could probably, if I travels, I could probably hit 30 in a day.
Wow.
It's a big circle then.
So thanks for listening to me. Officially, we're going to play by the book. We're going to, you know, have the proposal voted on and we'll abide by the results. And then in the meanwhile, we'll have to adopt regulatory ordinances as far as, we'll have this ordinance, but the law also provides for us to license, you know, it would have to be licensed locally as well as at the state level. So we would have to set fees and rates and...
There's really nothing from that commission side that we would have to do.
No, not that I know of.
Because it's so open-ended.
Right.
So there's no changes to make, there's no...
Yes, well...
The laws, the ideas and the language for whatever happens at the election, if it needs to change, would come down through the village council to us?
Yeah.
To have a public hearing or it would be no public hearing?
It's already voted.
Yeah, pretty much. But the usual triggers for a planning commission review may apply, even though it's not the zoning district, businesses, commercial enterprises are held to a different set of standards by the Michigan Building Code and by the state law. So they very well, if they start making modifications to the properties, things like that, then the site plans, certainly the building codes would apply.
Now, there are some areas that are called green zones.
Yeah.
Are they specific area, are they just inviting them to certain spots?
Right.
Or are they limiting to them to certain spots?
Well, they're limiting to those spots.
Should we have a green zone?
You know, I don't know.
Because that's a big...
We're only talking about one.
Correct, but we give them a...
Future advice. But if we... Future advice to maybe to set up?
A green zone?
Yeah. I, my impression is, is that, like I said, with builders, if they're working with the community and they want, they don't want to step out of the community, they'll agree. They'll say, okay, give us a couple of places where we can do this and we'll work with you on it. But again, Romeo, they may have set up, they already have said, we want you here. Maybe that'll work for them, but that doesn't mean that the state law may or may not agree with that, you know, this.
Just wondering if it would be worth pre-acting that.
So if tomorrow, I can't think of a place that we could have a green zone, and then once again, I guess once we're opted in, people could change things so that we can end up with more than one. I don't know that you could, if they could go outside the green zone.
If you can limit other businesses like the alcohol, why can't we limit...
Because of the enabling legislation.
So it's...
And that's, we're back to that again.
Our hands are tied because of Michigan law. There's no T.
Right.
Right. So the only ordinance is, is we can make, what can we do? What can we say if there's...
It's a petition, right?
Yeah.
If it's approved, we have our ordinance, we're done. We have no choice.
There. We would, we would go, we could probably at that point explore challenging or, we could try passing a petition out of law. I mean, but you're getting, you're getting real gray there.
I think there's more people out there that would be really bothered by trigger words that they're using these, that, you know, these trigger words, residential area, dispensary multiple, you know, but just certain words that these guys in our village would...
Oh, yeah, and I think that's why we saw the lawsuits by that organization because they, as you heard, the language is, it's not...
We tried.
Yeah, we tried to, you know, represent what would actually happen in the village based on what state law says. You think you do, that somebody that has a marijuana license could absolutely open a shop, yeah, if it passes, so.
So any vacant property in the village is...
Any, any vacant or...
So in my house, I could apply for a license and...
Yes.
And this is the only occupation or commercial type venture they can do this because of the way this law was written?
Definitely.
Well, like I can't open a beauty salon in my house, can I?
No, no, no.
Why?
Because the, and this is what I was talking about, you have to hear this sometimes, several times before it begins to, you see how it weaves. Because the enabling legislation specifically says you cannot, you cannot prohibit it anywhere in your community except in residential zoning districts that are exclusively residential. And yes, I did talk to the attorneys about changing the zoning ordinance.
Well, what about, okay, if you have, if there's a whole section that's only residential, isn't that by definition only residential?
No.
Why not?
Because our ordinance provides that people can have home businesses, they can have a church. I mean, it's not exclusively residential. If it's exclusively residential, you have to go back to our zoning book and look under residential zoning and read that, yeah, we don't exclusively just allow people to live in these zoning units.
And I don't, I don't see, I mean, I don't see signs out for some of these home businesses, but now Mike DePalmer is out of business, now Steve Johnson, the electrician, can't run his business. Because I know their home-based businesses, they don't have an office to go to, but that it's that mix, we have to stay mixed for our residents.
Well, wait, wait, if you live in your house and you have a truck and you drive somewhere to do chit chats, you're not running your business, but you can take office space and you can, against your taxes, you can call it your...
Yeah, you're allowed like 10%, of the square footage, no more than 10%.
But it is, it is a write-off, so it's a legitimate home business, home-based business, I guess.
Yeah. And like I said, Leonard's not the only village with zoning that allows those intermixed uses, so to speak. And they, and I'm sure that when the language was drafted for the proposal back in 2018, they knew very well what they were doing because they used the adjective exclusively. They didn't just say can't be in any, you can't exclude it from any residential zone area. They made it exclusively residential.
Well, I see that you could grow it in your own house, but not that you could sell it in your own house.
Well, that's it. That's one of the differences is for personal use, you don't need a license, you don't need to do whatever, you're allowed to plant it if you're assuming two people in the home. If it is a business, and that's the whole problem, is it is a business, it's in a residential neighborhood.
As long as you're licensed.
Well, because you have a, and the state doesn't care, they're, if you meet the requirements that the state has set up, they don't, I don't think they know where you're going to, they may know where you're going to, that's what I'm saying, I'm going to do it in Leonard, maybe have it addressed, but there's no reason... maybe have an address, but there's no reason for them to say, "Well, what zoning is it, et cetera." That's where it differs from the liquor laws, liquor laws, enabling legislation, and time have evolved, so that those are relative questions.
Well, liquor law is based on property too. You have a license at this property.
Oh, right, right.
Where this marijuana isn't necessarily, it's...
No, they, when they drafted that proposal, they knew exactly what they were doing, it wasn't by accident that this was done, so.
It's actually most unfortunate for people who got true medical marijuana, because they went through all, they hobbled out a different building and did all these things, and then these guys walk in, they're like, "Ooh, doesn't it..."
These guys are probably mad. Wasn't there all these laws, where there had to be a fence, and there had to be security, and there had to be cameras?
Medical, right?
Well, that's yet to come, I mean, what do you think they're going to do? They had a couple illegal roads here, and had some township that had been broken into, and the owners literally marched out of the township, Sheriff's Department, and demanded that they catch the guys that broke into their marijuana grove and stole their marijuana. And I mean, I'm sure they were told, "Yeah, that's going to be right at the top of our list of things to get done." So it's just, world's changing.
And that's where other problems might come into play, because if that operation existed like that, maybe they would have to get some kind of a vicious stop.
Well, I know a property that's north of here that is armed, 247.
Not too far from you.
Curse.
I don't know if it's curse, I don't, there is an operation.
I'm not going to say, I know where it's at, but I'm, you know, but yes, I, the neighbor said, "Yeah, don't swing by the house at the wrong time, because if you get the wrong property, you're in trouble." So, yeah, that's what it's going to come down to, and a lot of these cases, the bad's going to show up.
Yeah, and the amount of, for the big businesses that are in that business, licensing fees and that are not a big deal to them, because the profits are there. Where it stays is, the smaller, the guy that thinks he's going to open up a business in his house and sell pot commercially, he won't last, that he'll either get dobbled up, or he just won't get the clientele.
So the policing agency in terms of, is it the state, is it M.D.R., is it the police, who, does the health department check on this kind of thing, or...
But your guess is as good as mine, doesn't it, because when we had the problem with on West Street, I talked to the sergeant at the Sheriff's Department, he said, "We can't get a county prosecutor to do anything." So that, and the state is the same way, that's a local issue, it's not us. We, in turn, would have had a prosecutor on our own in order to address that, and again, time and money and administration, I mean, it's like, it's taken on a lot, and ultimately, what's it going to cost the community?
And we saw, they took us to court twice over language.
Right.
They had money to fight over the language, so they had money to fight over...
Yeah, we still haven't seen our attorneys go, so, we'll see.
I thought the lizard was supposed to fail.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thanks for listening to me, and if you have someone asking for information and you're not comfortable, send them my way, send them to the village and we'll try and...
I think that would be my best.
Well, I think...
If there's any reason to share the petition.
Hearing all this at once, for the first time, believe me, the council, Lori, Judy and I, just, we poured over this stuff for several days, as things were coming back and forth, and we started back in February, you know, that's when we first started bringing up to learn more about what's going on, so, but thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you for bringing our attention. Next on our agenda is the updates and maintenance that was done on Mullen Hall, I guess they got a new sink, what exactly is...
Sink and a hot water heater, water heater, sink, toilet?
In the...
It's not over now, is it?
Just there, not in here?
Yeah, here we did new plumbing for the sink and the hot water heater.
For the bathroom or the kitchen also? The kitchen, this part?
Kitchen, the kitchen now works.
Okay.
The only thing we're lacking is the hot water heaters need to be watered, and they're electric. And then in the annex, we put in new plumbing under the sink, a water heater, and we replaced the toilet in that facility, so.
Maintenance needs to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, village council meeting update, strawberry festival went really good, as far as I know, any comments or questions on how that went? I know I heard some people were not happy with the times of the parade.
It was different, so I'm sure it wasn't...
Right, it was just change, everyone's used to tradition. Did you have it later today, were there benefits to that?
The car show really was a huge success, I really enjoyed it a lot, and the problem was that it passed, the folks that had those wonderful cars, in order for them to come, they always had to take the back road.
Right.
Because of the way that was set up with the parade at the time, so pushing the parade back allowed them to drive on the normal road, and then they got to start the parade and just kind of lead it out at four o'clock. I thought it was beneficial, because people stayed around for the parade, so overall, I thought it was really successful, it was a great day.
Yeah, I was at the festival, but I missed the parade part, because I had a baby shower to go to, so. The Boy Scout signage, I know the village is going to contribute to his funding in the sense of some support. Does he have a timetable on that?
Well, he had hoped to, he had done this year. With our support, he's much closer to his goal, but I don't know how far away he is at this point. I did, I was contacted by the Fort County Community Foundation, and they were interested in helping him, so I sent him that information, and hopefully he followed up on it, I have not heard anything, though.
Okay. Any other planning commission questions or concerns? I had a comment on Lori's pond area, it's looking very nice, how did you weather the rains that just came that were like two inches?
I just lost a little bit of grass, but it's not awful, you know, we ran one of those things that kind of cuts into the ground and puts the seed in at just the right height, and so it had enough of a chance to kind of get started, and it's not great soil, so it may take a little effort, it's going to be a work of progress, but it's better than what it was.
Did Mom handle the rain?
Totally handled the rain, yeah.
So I'll be messing the back?
So we have, we had a grade, and we had a graded, you know, the way the thing is, the design that we have, and so that pipe, we've got the pipe coming in from across the street, and then it kind of keeps working down a grade, and then it has an exit pipe for overflow that will go to the back of the yard, and it still was within like probably four inches of that overflow pipe, so, you know, it kind of works its way out too, just because it's very subtle grading, so I think what will happen is the pond will keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger, before it probably hits that pipe, you know?
Yeah, but, yeah, we're happy with it, yeah. Glad the community was able to help. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, it is eight o'clock. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the end.